To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is February 21st, 2024, 6:30. We do have a public hearing on a street vacation. I did not get my folder pulled out. Zach, do you want to talk very briefly about that?
Sure, Dan.
You need to make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, make a motion.
Open the public hearing.
Perfect. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Kodal Group One LLC made a petition to the city to vacate the street. This is Gibson Street, which is just between, off Main Street, right by Monfort. This afternoon.
It was up there just a second ago, I thought. Not really much of a street.
It is not much of a street. And they own both sides of the street, and it would just go into their property as a
So it goes from Main Street through Mill Street to the railroad right-of-way. They own both sides of the property between Mill and Main. And then the Maddox Group owns the other section on both sides. So we would, in theory, just be giving it to the same property owner. It would become a part of their property, and we would retain our standard utility right-of-ways. Is that fair? Okay. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. Okay. Any questions for Zach before we ask the public? Anyone from the public here to speak on this public hearing?
Hi, my name's Lyndon McGinn.
Please stand up and come to the mic if you could state your name and your address for the record.
My name's Lyndon McGinn. I'm at 708 South Jordan. I have property on Mill and on Office Island there and facing Menford. And I didn't quite understand when I received this exactly why or what they were doing. So that's why I'm here. I don't know that it would have any effect on mine, but I didn't know until I got here to see what was actually happening.
Has your question been answered, or would you like some more explanation from Zach?
I don't think it would affect. They're just closing, they're just, they're not really closing anything, right?
No, it's currently a public right-of-way, and it would not currently, it would go to not being a public right-of-way.
I mean, there's no way, because I have property at 347 with Main, and I have some dealings with property on Mill Street, so I just want to make sure that wasn't going to be, you know, blocked off.
It wouldn't affect Mill Street. It would just affect basically between Mill Street and Main Street right there, and then on the other side of Mill Street. But Mill Street would still be open.
The one they, the street they call Ireland, then it's not a problem either.
Ireland would still be a city street.
Okay, there's, it doesn't affect that at all?
No.
Because I have a parking lot there. Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak or on this topic? Okay.
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, perfect. Thanks, Zach. Okay, the time being 6:30, 6:00 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please turn on all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table on the back of the room. Amy, will you please hold the roll?
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Mark Harmon.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Robbie King.
Here.
Vienna McKenzie.
Here.
Daryl Polling.
Here.
Daryl Trussler.
Daryl did let me know that he would not be able to make it this evening. You all should have received a copy of the minutes from January 9th and then from our special meeting on February 12th. If there are no additions or corrections, those will stand as presented. Anything? Okay, that stands. So, there being no old business, we'll move directly to new business. Matt Mason with the Verge Group is here this evening. He has, first up, our monthly update on the municipal complex, and then a larger discussion about the bond. So, good evening, Matt. Thank you.
Good evening. We'll get right into it. So for the February update, out there at the site, both projects are going well. First, with the site work, the concrete curb work has started out there, and then the storm piping has also finished up out there as well. They've also begun work at the, for the Bear Shell extension that extends it from the curve up to where the drive access is into the new Street Department building. At Fire Station, they're about 95% complete on the brickwork, and then that will move them into the rest of the exterior facade work, which is like a fiber cement board, sometimes known as like a hardy plank. And then on the inside, they're looking to get started on priming and doing a first coat of paint on both the first and second floor levels. Both of those are the drywall. Some areas are getting a final coat of mud, but the majority of them are pretty well sanded out and ready to be painted. The windows have been installed, with the exception of the curtain wall. Curtain wall sections are the bigger windows in the apparatus bay. Those are scheduled to arrive or begin installation in March. And then the rooftop, big rooftop unit, is expected to arrive and be set in mid-February, or by the end of February, excuse me. So a couple of weeks. Hard-lit ceilings and acoustical ceilings are going to begin to be installed in both the first and second floor as well. And as far as procurement items, we did learn here recently, the generator right now, the delivery date for that has been moved to July 2nd. That would not have an impact on the certificate of occupancy. If we can still get that permitted and occupy the building, the generator would be used for, you know, emergencies and everything. But right now, we're working with the contractor to furnish a temporary generator that could be located if needed, if it comes to that. In addition, the overhead doors right now are scheduled to arrive mid-May. That's one of the last things that would be installed, but with those coming in mid-May, the contractor will probably be sealing up those openings for the bi-fold doors, keeping it weather-protected so they can move forward with the finishes in the apparatus bay. Couple photos from the inside, since a lot of the work is taking place on the inside now. To the left is the apparatus bay. See some of the railings, the stairs going up to the mezzanine level there, and that big opening in the middle there would be the curtain wall system I spoke about. To the right is the second floor, actually, that is getting ready for the hard-lit ceilings to be installed, and again, the walls are ready to paint. At the Street Department, again, the masonry is completed over there, and the windows and storefront doors are also complete. They poured the concrete apron right out in front of the overhead doors, and the walks that wrap around the back have also been poured. Again, all the overhead doors, those are installed along with the operators, and they are finishing the drywall in the office area. Just walked through there today, and they're expecting the painter to be, to begin painting, priming and painting those walls here any day. They're ready for them. And the power is on. We're actually burning some of the lights in there as well. There's still some of the high bay lights in the overall, you know, garage area, basically, that needs, still need to be installed. Again, some of the inside photos, interior photos. Right now, the budget may remain intact and still on schedule for a late spring. As mentioned in the Order Works meeting, late spring, right now, we're looking at that last week in May. By June 1, and then the move-in would be, you know, basically in June, you have to start moving in.
Okay. Any questions for Matt on the update? Oh, do you have that?
Yeah, we can take questions, but basically, the storage building, you can see in the foreground there, as of today, it does have, no? Storage building, the roof is on as of today, so they're finishing putting that up today. Salt Barn is also completed. Street Department Building hasn't changed a lot from the exterior. Like I said, you got a lot of the concrete sidewalks and the concrete aprons. You can see from the outside on this drone photo that have been completed. And coming into view now between the two buildings would be the shared parking lot. You can see, start to see some of the curb work going in there, and some of that curb and parking area starting to take shape. For the Fire Department Building or Fire Station, again, the brickwork is pretty well completed. The green portion is where that cementitious fiber board would be installed. And then it's going to kind of span into view, it's just coming into the screen now, is where the extension of Bear Shell. That's where the, some of the work is taking place there as well. They've got some of those drain storm structures installed, and are putting the aggregate base down for that portion.
So then, Matt, part two of our conversation this evening is an amendment request for the bond.
Correct.
So, as mentioned, we're getting near to the end there, and we've kind of realized
some, there's some savings within the bond that we have, as well as there has been accrued interest on the bond that has, again, accrued and started to kind of gain, gain some steam there. And basically, between the two of them, we have about $201,000 left over from the bond proceeds. And then the project has been able to accrue about $750,000 of accrued interest, so combined total of about $960,000. We had looked at as a team a couple potential projects to be included into this, to go through for consideration. These funds for the accrued interest, they can either be used on the project for some of these additional projects, or to pay down the bond. But those are the only two uses. You wouldn't be able to use that offside the project, outside of the project. So one of the projects we've discussed is an extension of Bear Shell. Right now, Bear Shell would just kind of end in a hammerhead, where it just passed the access drive to the Streets Department, so it kind of deadens there. This would extend it a little further, creating a cul-de-sac, and would, we would be able to get this constructed using the current standards, city standards, to turn this into a public street. In addition to that, there'd be an apron off to the side there, near the detention pond. They would be able to park an apparatus at that location and potentially be able to do some water training at the detention basin as well. We have been able to get some informed budget numbers on that, so the contractor's gone out to subs and trade partners, and right now, currently, the budget for this is sitting about $300,000. In addition, another project we've looked at is, right now, around the Street Department, the entire lot is not asphalt. There's a portion of it there in yellow. Right now, it's just to be stone, so by making it asphalt, obviously, you increase longevity of that lot, decrease the maintenance, you know, make it easier to plow. When you're plowing that in the winter times, it's obviously going to increase the wear of that lot and increase some maintenance costs. So we've looked at that, and again, an informed number on that is about $100,000. Next is the preemption devices. This is kind of a safety feature. We'd be looking to add a preemption device at the light there at State Route 3 and Broadway. And what that does is basically, as an apparatus leaves, it needs to turn north there. That preemption device would be able to control that, that light there, basically, and hold traffic to allow the emergency vehicle to pass through. In addition with that, we would also be adding flashers on either side of Bear Shell Lane there on Broadway. Those would not be going off all the time. Those flashers are basically, as, if there's an alarm and an emergency vehicle leaves, those flashers would activate at that point, identifying, you know, vehicular traffic there on Broadway that an emergency vehicle will be pulling out. And again, budget numbers on this, historical data is around $100,000 for those as well. And then lastly, as you know, I mean, solar panels, straightforward, looking at possibly being able to put those on the roof of the Street Department, but a budget for adding solar panels would be about $275,000. So those are the four projects that we've looked at, you know, all totaling about, excuse me.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
I think, and obviously, we, questions for Matt or us? The idea is that these projects were not included in the original project. They were left out as options that didn't maybe seem affordable when we acquired the bond, or that they were more on the long-term list. That includes finishing out Bear Shell, the cul-de-sac. As of now, it would just end in a T. There's nothing, there's no turnaround ability. It's simply a dead-end square street that doesn't meet our public street standards, so we would have to keep it as a private street. That wouldn't be in our road inventory. And then the lot was scaled back from full asphalt to gravel, so that's sort of being added back in. Preemption has always been talked about. Again, one of those items that we could do later with the infrastructure to be installed. And then on the fourth item, the solar, if you recall, maybe like about a year ago, we had a discussion, a presentation from Verge about that. There was some discussion about bonds. We didn't have interest in bonding. This may be an option now. It is set up to supply both buildings, and the buildings were built to sustain it. I think somebody had had a question at one time about penetrations through the roof. There are no penetrations through the roof. It just kind of sits on top. So it does supply both facilities. It's not.
What percentage of the electricity would the solar pan, 275,000, get us on the solar? Like, what percentage of the energy usage would that give?
I'll have to, it was in that Verge report. I think, I went, it was like 24, 36% of the projected usage.
It's the same, oh, it's what they suggested in that.
Yes, that's their, that same company did this for us.
This would just be us outright buying these, right? We would own these, or is that?
We would buy them through GM Development as part of the project. We would still have them as the maintenance and management contractor. And we do get about $100,000 back from the federal government in the solar incentive. So our total for it was 300, and we get about 100 back.
What would be the benefit of making the street a public street? What would we benefit?
Mark, do you want to talk about that? Yes, you, Mark. Do you want to talk about that?
No, we talked about it being private at the time. We looked at the potential for future development for the remaining 10 acres as a feasibility. We also looked at, we done a trail feasibility study here, was that within the last year?
Yeah.
And one of the discussion points at that time would be that at the end of the public street, we would have the cul-de-sac and have a trailhead access point if that trail was ever constructed.
I think that, and it also allows us to put it into our road inventory. We do receive some dollars for miles of road that would allow us to, in the future, use state dollars to repave or resurface that. I think probably the largest one is from the idea that we're, we don't have a private street at that point, and we can try to keep people off of it at Broadway because it's private property beyond that. We see that being a bit of a challenge. It being a public street allows for a little more policing in public access, I guess you could say. And then if we do do something with the south 10 acres, those properties would have to be accessed through our private property, which could lead to some concern and road concerns. They could access off of Broadway, but we have another street cut permit if they don't want to cross onto ours. Those kinds of benefits, I guess.
I guess the other thing, excuse me, the flashing lights, I believe we did talk about that. Was that taken out at the last minute?
There, yes. There was some discussion about installing the infrastructure for like a full-blown stoplight at Bear Shell and Broadway. That wasn't ever really brought to fruition, but the idea was we could go back in and add the flashing lights later if we wanted to or deemed them necessary. The discussion with the state of Indiana at State Route 3 and Broadway actually did easier than we had thought. We thought that might be quite an uphill battle, but they were very willing to allow us to install the preemption device on that signal, but it was not included in the project.
I love that people can tell you. If you're ever out there in that intersection from probably 11:15 in the morning to 1:30, it's impossible to get through that intersection without traffic that's sitting there waiting for the signal changes. And I think it's absolutely critical for safety to have that preemption put in at that intersection.
And that's where I was going with that. I think that's a huge safety issue.
What would control 10th Street? Broadway?
Nothing. It would remain just exactly the way it is. From my understanding, preliminary discussion on the preemption, we want to clear Broadway. Northbound Broadway, you want to clear so the fire truck can get out.
Correct.
So it would stop all traffic on the bypass, northbound and southbound both. It'd also stop all traffic coming across from Broadway north of the bypass. It would continue to let, there be a green signal for everything that's in the fire truck's path to move on and get out of the way.
My concern is.
10th Street would still be have a stop sign. They would be subject to the stop sign as they've always been, but they would have the flashing lights. They would be able to see lights and sirens as soon as the truck hits out Broadway. So I don't think it's going to be a critical issue for people pulling out there.
Would it only control going north? Would it, what about going south?
It'll stop all traffic on Broadway, southbound, and it'll stop the traffic both directions on the bypass. So the only thing that won't be allowed to move when the preemption's hit will be northbound Broadway to clear out and get out of the way.
You mentioned making that a public street, making it more, saying that you could control it better with police or whatever. So, I mean, you make it a public street, it's a public street. I want to drive down it, I want to drive down it.
Sure. Yeah, the benefit of it being, that's the benefit of the public, is we don't have to try to keep them off of it if it's a public street. If we don't build a cul-de-sac, we can't make it a public street without a variance, which we could apply for, obviously, but we hold others accountable to that cul-de-sac design standard, so. Without the cul-de-sac and without a variance, we can't make it a public street. We also can't address off of it. The post office won't allow us to. We'll have to make the addresses north Broadway, not west Bear Shell.
Are there plans now for those buildings that are on the south side of that cul-de-sac? Is there something in the works that we're looking at doing, where we'll need that access in a hurry?
The redevelopment commission will own five acres after the survey, and the city will own the other five acres of the south section of 10. There are no current plans, but as Matt made mention, these funds have to be spent within 12 months of the certificate of occupancy. They have to be spent on this project. So if we go back later and build a cul-de-sac, let's say in two years, we would have to come up with 300,000 plus to do it then, where these funds are already committed to this project, which I think is a great opportunity for us to do it if we ever think we're going to do it.
Would you let the future development pay for it?
Assuming that's not a city development of some sort, yeah.
And then the split of the 10 acres into two five-acre tracks, which, who's getting, which five acres, city getting the ones by Broadway or the ones from the back?
The agreement with the redevelopment commission was they would get the front five on Broadway.
Looking through all this, I sent an email today, but I didn't send it promptly, so I apologize for that, but from my standpoint, I don't necessarily see the need to spend $300,000 to make this a public street, put a cul-de-sac on it for something that's not going to be used. Free.
People would pardon them there.
I'm probably, I don't see the benefit of that 300,000 being spent right now. I think it should go back against the bond payment. I think the payment of the Street Department isn't absolute. We should have, we probably never should have put the stone that began with. We should have probably put the bare asphalt down for day one, so I think that's a good project. The preemption devices is a must, and that's just something that we need to do. And then, I'm not a big fan of the solar, spending the 275,000, so from my viewpoint, I'd rather see 575,000 go back into the bond, payment of the bond.
Is there a, is there a return that's already set up on those solar panels? The savings on using solar for electric, what, do we know what that rate would be?
Yes, let me find that. It was in the document from Verge.
I guess that's, I'd like to see that piece, but then I'd also like to understand what's the maintenance cost going to cost us for the solar panels as well? Because we'll have to pay a maintenance fee on that, I'm sure, every year to maintain it.
There's also a cost to get rid of them. When they go bad.
I think the earlier study, they were showing that they were pretty reliable up to 20 years, so, I mean, so hopefully they would, they would last for some time, but...
Then it'd just be somebody else's problem.
Well, no, I mean, it'd still be our problem in 20 years, but it just...
Or we'll be behind. Yeah.
And there's nowhere for most to get rid of them? You would have to ship them to, probably out of state.
They are becoming more and more popular, so I would imagine at some point in time in the future, there are going to be more opportunities to probably dispose of them in the proper way. More and more communities are accepting them and putting them in.
While you're struggling, I think somebody's phone is too close to the microphone. I think I heard what's happening.
I'm not blaming Amy for all of it. I think it's her mic, it's her mic, actually. I think that's enough.
If we put in the solar panels, what time would it take for us to recoup that money that we're using to purchase that amount of stone?
Kristin, can you switch over to this one, please? Okay, so it's behind Daryl. Try to run from up there. Okay, so on the Fire Station, is this the right date? Yeah, 271. So Jamie, your first question about utility offset, so that represents 38% of the campus, I believe. 271 for the total project cost, 20,000 or 20-year guaranteed energy savings, so that's what Verge says by doing this, and they have this table, I'll scroll down. This is the amount of projected energy cost savings over 20 years. The federal incentive is 108,000, that's what we would get back. Reduction in Duke Energy 434, so that's how they get to that number.
You said on the Fire Department, is this, is it going on both buildings on the campus?
Well, I was under the impression that it was.
It was presented as only on the Street Department.
It presented as only on the street department?
Yeah, through the underground con-
Yeah, but there, so we, there, we built it so that the solar panels could be put on the street department, but power both buildings that way, because the roof's really easy to put them on. That style of building, so it was set up and it was intended for that. I will have to, I was under the impression that this was the campus. So then, let's see here. And this will be really hard to read. So part of Daryl's question lies down here. So this is the... Okay, so whoever asked about the contract annually, this is what we would pay Vergey annually to manage and monitor our system. This is their projected annual utility savings certificates. And then that's the one-time federal incentive that we would get back. So this would be, 2025 would be a much more standard here, right? The idea would be that we would save nineteen thousand in utility savings. We would spend twenty-one hundred in system maintenance. We would have a cash flow of seventeen thousand. And then, you know, it sort of just stacks up. This, and then they run this out for twenty-five years.
That's where they said they lost like about a half percent of efficiency a year up to twenty years.
So after twenty years, they were only about eighty percent efficient.
But they build that into this calculus. So this is how, so in year twenty-five, they're claiming, you know, based on their four percent energy increase assumption, their fees, et cetera. And that would be after the twenty-five year. And that's about the extent, and to Mark's question, I was under, I had asked them about both buildings, but this number lines up. So this may be just for one, but I don't actually know the answer to that.
Is there a durability rating on those things for extreme weather, hail, tornadoes, that kind of thing? What's the, what's the durability on them?
I, I'm not the expert on that. I do recall when they were here talking about it, we, they do, we, in the line, there's an insurance line item, so we do carry insurance on them. And I would assume that that would fall under some type of standardized spec, that, you know, this amount of damage would equal that. That is part of the benefit of their contract maintenance, is they monitor it in real time so that if a panel is failing or not producing, they can come out, look at it, replace it. So that helps other than it's just sitting up there and we actually don't know if it's working or not. There are no batteries, I know that's always a concern. There's no batteries in this system. Those are expensive and have a very short life. That's why the percentage is lower. It's for sort of instant use. It's scaled for instant use of the facility. Any other questions on that for the moment? Anybody else have, yeah, by no means this is not an all or nothing. It's truly an à la carte type conversation, so.
Maybe, maybe we could talk about the paving the street department and the preemption devices. I think, and maybe I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think there's a pretty unanimous feeling, maybe, that we approve those two. I don't know if you want to make that, if you'd like me to make that in a motion, that we could talk about the others, but I would make a motion that we approve the paving the street department lot and the preemptive devices.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor of those two projects being added?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
I don't know how soon we have to have an answer, but maybe what we can do is, I don't remember, I don't remember, was that, did we have that packet a while back? Is that what we, it's been a while. I just-
Need a-
Yeah, I just wondered, maybe we could resend that and give us a chance to go take a look at that again on the solar devices. Maybe we could revisit that next month?
That one is way less time-sensitive than the cul-de-sac conversation. So if we want to, if you want, and I can bring Rick back too, Rick from Vergey, and he could answer a lot more of those specific questions. I just didn't know how far into the week we'd get. We could definitely do that. The cul-de-sac conversation is much more time-sensitive as Shudy is already on site doing road-based work.
And with this one, obviously you get into the design, so we'd have to have time for the engineers to put together their drawing packets, get those submitted and approved, and then the contractor will get those out on the streets for the finalized pricing and everything. If it pushes past that, we could get to a point where work could still be done, still be done under the accrued interest and everything, but we may have additional fees that could come from extended general conditions and keeping the contractors out on site longer than the actual duration of the project.
Our next meeting, I'm just trying to remember, it's, it's what, about three weeks away, right? Yeah, March 12th, so we got about, I mean, if we made a decision then, is that going to create the problem? And that gives everybody a little more chance to get some additional research on that, figure out if that's what we want to do with that date, create hardship, where it's going to cost, create additional costs.
I think we can look at that with the engineering team and see what they can do with their drawings and trying to get those expedited, and we'll work with contractors to table this to, to the March.
Just, and I mean, unless somebody has a strong opinion, a different way, it just, it sounds like maybe we have a lot of different questions or concerns, and maybe we'd be better off waiting until that date, that we've got a chance to kind of do some additional homework on that one, if that's okay.
I would agree.
Is, okay, is there enough interest for, maybe we could go ahead and have the architecture firms start on this process to help with that over the next three weeks versus-
Is that included in the price?
They're working on our project, so I think we could probably get them to do that. If, but I also don't want them to spend their labor hours if it's dead in the water. If there's real conversation to be had about it, then we could maybe get them working a little bit ahead to help with the delay if it is decided.
I don't want to put cul-de-sac in. That's my opinion. I don't want to spend that money.
Maybe a different version of the question is, is there any other information that you want over the next three weeks that will help that conversation then?
Well, I think one thing that could help drive the conversation, what we won't know in three weeks, is what would we be putting, that if, right? So I know, and we won't know that in three weeks, but, but I think, two, making it a public street would make it a more desirable place to, you know, develop on. And that's, that's where my, that's where I'm not completely against it. I think we can make it more developable. Somebody would want to develop on it more likely if we make that a public street. Because if the only access is Broadway and the other lots got the Broadway access, I just, that's my concern with it. We've got a lot nobody would want to develop on.
I don't look at it that way. It's a location. I mean, it's a location. So if you're wanting that location, and, you know, I feel like it's money we're, we'll spend that maybe for nothing. It could sit empty, those pieces of property could sit empty for, for years. You know, they can pay for their own road, make their own.
It could be, but then it, but it's also shovel-ready, so the right person or the right developer finds it, then maybe that, I hear what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with you. I just, I think it makes the property more marketable.
And I kind of go back to my initial question on what would benefit. I think by opening that street, it could end up being a safety issue too. I don't think we want traffic going back and forth through there with fire trucks coming out and out. You've got heavy machinery going back to the street department. I'm kind of on the, by head's train here. I, I don't, I'm not for it.
So what do we want to do with it? I mean, do we want to just table it and come back in three weeks and talk about it again? Or, and we won't, we won't make any progress then on it, it doesn't sound like. But if there's something that you would like to know over the next couple of weeks, we can pull that together.
I'm okay with that.
You've got three weeks to change my mind.
Yeah.
Tell them that we could be an opportunity to actually go out there.
Sure.
I'll make a motion, we table the, basically the cul-de-sac idea and the solar panels.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, signify for a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, travel safe. Okay, next topic. Jerry Hickman is here to discuss the re-establishment at the CumCap Development Fund. Good evening, Jerry. I know this is something that was sort of brought up last year, and Reedy's been on top of it for a few years for us, and it's that time of year to get in to have the discussion. So we want to present that to the council, so I'll let you take over.
So did everybody get the letter that was sent out a couple of weeks ago? Before I briefly describe that, just really big picture, the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, also known as CCD Fund. It's a rate-driven fund, so currently you guys are at point zero four four three cents. The max tax rate it can go to for a city or a town is five cents. So you're slightly, slightly under that. And it's mainly used for capital in nature. So you guys do have an opportunity if you would want to re-establish. So jumping into the timeline, the process to re-establish, it seems like a lot, but it's, it's, you just have to hit some statutory deadlines. The first one being sending it, the notice to taxpayers to the newspaper. It has to be sent by tomorrow, which that's really simple. It takes two minutes to send it to the newspaper. But then there has to be two publications, one ten days before the public hearing and one at least three days before the public hearing, and they have to be seven days apart, so that's what is shown here. Then you, on March 12th, you would hold the first reading slash public hearing, which it sounds like I heard March 12th, so that matched up. And I wanted to confirm this next meeting as far as the second council meeting for the second reading and adoption, April 9th. So you'd have, have those two meetings, and as long as you guys would approve it and it's adopted, you then have to send another notice to the newspaper. That has, that notifies the public that you guys adopted this rate. Once that notice is adopted, it start, or publishes, starts a thirty-day period where, you know, taxpayers could potentially petition against it. I believe it's twenty-five taxpayers. If that would happen, then there would be a hearing with, you know, the DLG of the Department of Government. But as long as that doesn't occur and that thirty days is up, the Decatur County Auditor would sign the certificate of no remonstrance. And then from there, the deadline to send all of this information in, which is, the next section is by May 31st. So you'd send in the procedure checklist, which is just some general information on the city, the particular cum fund, which would be the CCD, the dates of the public hearing, adoption, and so forth. And then the notice to taxpayers that was published that has to be sent in. The ordinance that was adopted has to be sent in, and then the notice of adoption has to be sent in along with the certificate of no remonstrance. From there, it then goes into the budget process, so you just make sure that you would adopt a levy and the five cent rate to match. And that's pretty much the process there. On the next page, there, you know, there was a change in how the max rate was capped. So, and that was due to House Enrolled Act 1260 back in 2022. Previously, you're ensuing AV. If that was more than your prior three-year average, the DLG would drop your rate a little bit. So historically, you would, which you can see these lists of historical CCD rates. It starts to, you know, dwindle down. But now with this House Enrolled Act, they took that away. So if you guys do decide to establish, it'll stay at that five cents unless there's legislative changes. So once again, unless there's changes, if you guys did this, then you wouldn't have to worry about going through the re-establishment process again. Towards the bottom there, just showing you the projected increase in property tax revenue as you did re-establish. We were very conservative in the net assessed value that we're showing. We just showed it staying the same from 24 to 25. You can see the property tax levy in 24 versus 25, an additional, you know, low over thirty-five thousand dollars if you guys do decide to re-establish. Some other things to consider is income tax allocation. Really big picture, how income taxes are distributed within the county, all units that receive them. Big contributing factor is probably your property tax levy and income tax. There are some other adjustments, but those are the two main contributing factors. So therefore, you know, if you re-establish your CCD rate, it bumps up your allocation. So you might get a little bit more of a piece of that pie when it comes to income taxes. On the flip side, you know, if you guys don't, maybe other units are re-establishing or they don't even have a cum rate and establish, then their, you know, piece of that income tax pie is going to grow for them. So, you know, I mentioned this previously in the summary. I mean, this would just be a one-time thing unless, you know, law changes on how this max cap is calculated. But it is an opportunity to gain a little bit more in property taxes. I quickly looked at, I mean, it's a little over half of a cent, so it's not much. But the way the tax rates work, in Greensburg, two percent is capped, so they wouldn't even see a property tax impact. One percent, it's like one or two dollars if your assessed value for a home is under like one hundred and thirty thousand. If it's over one hundred and thirty thousand, they're capped, so they won't even see an impact. And then three percent, it was roughly like five dollars and seventy cents per one hundred thousand dollars. So even if it was a million-dollar, three percent property, it'd be roughly fifty-seven dollars over the course of the year. So due to the rate structure currently, there's very minimal impact even on the taxpayer side, so. And I went through that pretty quickly. If anybody has any particular questions.
If it's not re-established, does the rate continue to drop?
It'll stay at that, the rate that it's at currently, yeah, after that change in '22, so it'll stay there unless, you know, statute changes.
You made the comment about the income, this is not an income tax base. It just plays into the formula-
Correct.
That, and if another agent, if another unit increases theirs, that reduces our income tax component as well, because they're forming a- And so the county council, Decatur County Council, did re-establish theirs for the 2024 year. So that will actually have a negative impact on our revenue on the income side.
Correct.
Okay. And if we reset ours, then we can reset that back to the proportions that were pre-existing.
It depends on what their prior rate was and how much more they're generating. But you'd at least like get some of that back. But hypothetically, say they didn't have a CCD fund and they re-established and did the full, for accounting, it's three and a third cents. In that scenario, obviously you're just capturing back just a little bit because you guys are close to the max. But if they established, you know, a completely new fund, then you wouldn't, it wouldn't- But if they established, you know, a completely new fund, then you wouldn't, it wouldn't get back to what it originally was. It just depends what their prior rate was versus what their, I'm assuming they went to the max, but I'm not sure.
You said the max was five?
Five cents for a city or a town. A county is only .0333. But a city or a town can go up to five cents for a CCD fund.
Are you looking for approval from us to send the notice to the taxpayers, I guess, start that process? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
On March 5th, we would, or on March 12th, I mean, basically that's where we could hold the public hearing. I'd make a motion that we, we start the process, I guess.
I assume Jerry or someone from Reedy will be here each meeting through the process. So we will have a lot of opportunities for questions, but any questions for Jerry at this moment? If not, motion's been made in second and to start the process, including sending the notice to taxpayers? All those in favor, signify if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. I think one point of.